No. I have my pages marked though.
Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, November the 3rd, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you. Board members, you have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, October the 20th, 2014. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
And after reviewing the minutes, I see that we can make a motion to be presented.
If there's no corrections, comments, or questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Next order of business is approval of claims. Board, you have a docket of six pages of claims dated November the 3rd, 2014. Wastewater claims in the amount of $989,047.82. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I have no comments or questions.
I have done.
One thing I do want to defer to the clerk on, let him explain to the general public, we don't generally have a docket of claims for wastewater this high, but on page two, there's a couple of claims, the pilot and the ROI. So Dan, could you explain that for us, please?
Yes. First of all, there's two payrolls on this actually also, which is unusual normally that there's only one. Every year, we're allowed to take, per budget, a pilot payment and a return on investment from the sewage, and that has also been done this year. The return on investment is $706,892, and the pilot payment is $174,196. And we figure this into the budget when we do our budgeting, and it goes back into help our budget, payrolls and things like that, expenses.
Questions or comments from board members?
I have none.
I have done.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated November the 3rd, 2014, in the amount of $989,047.82.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting, and we have no new business this evening. With that, I'll ask, I'll introduce our comments from board members.
I have none this evening.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:03 PM. We will convene again in these chambers on Monday, November the 17th, 2014. Board of Works meeting will begin in 10 minutes. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, November the 3rd, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated October the 20th, 2014. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none this evening.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. Next on the agenda is approval of claims. Board, this evening, you have a docket of claims dated November the 3rd, 2014. Corporate claims, 41 pages in the amount of $1,249,7547. The floor is open for questions or comments.
Thank you. I have no questions or comments.
I have none this evening.
If there are no questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the November 3rd, 2014 corporate claims in the amount of $1,249,7547.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting, and tonight, we have no new business. So we'll move to comments from board members.
I have none this evening.
I'd like to thank Chief Chefsire for the updates that we get when there's a major fire in Beach Grove. They're very informative. It's just a really good email that you send that communication out, so, thank you.
Well, we have a minute. Why don't we, Rob, you and Mark, want to come up and give us some updates on what's going on? There's a lot going on in the city, run-wise, and maybe, maybe you can give us some updates.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Month of October's been extremely busy for the Beach Grove Fire Department. We had three significant fires, one on North 7th. The Beach Grove Firearms, which was even more significant than the last. It took a lot of man-hours to get that fire out. I'd like to thank the guys that were on duty, men and women here at Beach Grove Fire, Chief Pierce who investigated the fire. We had a lot of additional outside help with the investigation. We had Public Works come out and help remove a lot of that debris. It was the ground-up rubber used for a backstop. It was very taxing and put in a lot of, lot of hours, getting everything cleaned up and investigated. I really appreciate everyone in the city for all their hard work and help with that fire. The last fire we had was just the other day, also 86 North 6, and that was a fatality fire. I'd like to thank, you know, the men and women of the Beach Grove Fire Department. It was a difficult task, not only putting out the fire, but dealing with the inside of the house. There's a lot of clutter, debris, and it was a very challenging situation. They handled it very professionally, and I greatly appreciate the work of, again, Jim Pierce for his investigation, working with the IFD, our investigators, our Beach Grove Police Department. They put in some long hours that day, and I'm very, very pleased with the outcome. With the fall and being busy, we were also faced with dealing with Ebola outbreaks throughout the United States and the challenges they present to us. We received recommendations from the CDC and our local medical direction on how to handle someone who's sick with Ebola. It's not something that I hope we ever encounter, but we were required to place protective equipment on all of our apparatus to keep our personnel safe. The equipment includes Tyvek suits, eye protection, gloves, booties, mask, and also protective wear for a potential patient. Those kits are not cheap, but we have to have them in place to keep our personnel safe in case it would ever happen. IEMS has a dedicated ambulance to transport these patients. For us as first responders, we would have initial dealings with the patient through a screen door interview in our protective gear, and we would assist and hand protective gear for that potential patient, and a special ambulance from IEMS would come and transport. It's a very good matrix, a good protocol that was developed. So what we're trying to do is keep our responders safe if encountered with one of these patients and prevent the spread of the disease. And that's what we're aiming for. That's nationwide. We are ahead of the curve here in Marion County, and a lot of departments across the nation are struggling to get the appropriate PPE, the equipment, in that they need. So that was very, very good that we were able to get that accomplished. Our equipment, having some equipment issue here at the stations. We had problems with Engine 57 with an alternator pulley and belt in the Kussmole battery charger that needed replaced. Today, we found out we need to replace the batteries in that engine also. We've had a couple separate warranty issues with Engine 56, but we also had a couple non-warranty items, such as front tires we'll need replaced this fall and also alignment. Medic 56 was in the shop also. It has close to 84,000 miles on it now. The vehicle had a preventive maintenance today. A couple small issues came up that we have taken care of this, this week, but I'm very pleased with the, the quality of both our road rescue ambulances the city was able to help us purchase and, and have. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those for you. I try to send out update and keep everyone aware of any fires we have and what's going on, any maintenance issues that arise.
I have a question, Rob. We are, we, where are we at with the heroin runs?
Jim, do you have the latest stats on?
I don't have any exact numbers since I didn't pull those out. As with everybody else in the county in this part of the country, they're, they're up. We've, I think this year, we've had a total of 30 cases we dealt with ourselves, or department has personally, that they've treated, and I'm sure there's probably a lot more. We're involved with other, other substances besides heroin. We get quite a few overdoses. But as of today, I don't have any exact numbers for you, but that is something that I work with the, the county medical directors and the county EMS folks too. We compile all of our data. So when you see those statistics come out in the news, those are including Beach Grove. So we, as a county group, compile that data. We don't do it individually anymore because it's such a big problem in Marion County. It's not any one department. We're all facing the same.
I think it should be reported. I mean, if there's an issue with heroin, I think the public needs to know.
There is, well, absolutely, there's an issue with heroin. That's, but like I said, what you're seeing in, in the, in the news is consistent with what's going on in Beach Grove. Like I said, I don't, I'm not trying to single us out because we have some of the same issues that Indianapolis is having, but it absolutely is a, is a big problem for the county, and I think the police can speak to that as well.
I know today, and Brad's not here tonight, but all of his employees went through, the state police come out and they went through meth lab training to recognize what's in the trash. So that was pretty good experience for them. And it helps with the MS4 reporting as well, city's required to do, so. All right, thanks, Chief. Mark?
Thank you. I have one more issue for you I need to make you aware of. Our reserve medic, Medic 57 is still over Andy Moore Ford. It should be ready to be picked up tomorrow, but we have the Tellmore retarder brake on that ambulance, and that's a braking system within that vehicle that we have to have. Like I say, the Medic 56 will have to go in the shop this week, and, and without a backup ambulance, that would definitely decrease our serviceability. So we had to have that vehicle fixed, and just want to make sure you're aware of that. It had to have wheel bearings, calipers, and brakes placed on it also. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Chief, can you update us on, I know you guys are super busy.
Yeah, we've been busy to start off with. We had a public safety meeting last week. Unfortunately, there were only three people at the meeting, which was Rob, myself, and Derek. But we discussed about fire alarm, our smoke alarms, check them. It was a change of time, that's the time to do that. As far as the police department, we want to encourage everybody to call in if they see something suspicious. Don't sit and wait. Anything that needs to be checked, checked. Compliance, they believe they're going to start slowing down because of the weather, but they're still going to be out there checking and having people call them, they hope, and continue keeping the city clean. To respond to some of Rob's comments, the police on the firearms side, the fire, we spend a lot of hours directing traffic, and it's our concern with that building with all the ammunition and firearms in it, that it's not sealed up very well. So we have to continue, continue to check on it. The fire on North 6, it's suspicious with the death, and our detectives are still investigating it and waiting for the coroner's report. The fire, the, the father of the victim came in today and gave us some information that detectives have to follow up, and we're trying to get into the house, but as Rob said, it's, it's a mess. So getting the right equipment to go in there to protect the officers, to do some searching, is going to create a challenge.
Could you talk a little bit about the, on the north part of the city, the break-ins? I don't know, was it a month ago or maybe two weeks?
About a month ago, where we made an arrest on one person, and there's two more that they're looking at. The person that was arrested, he made a comment that he wasn't the only one involved, and we know that, but getting upon shop information and some other witnesses to identify property that was in the residence is an ongoing investigation, and it, it takes time. I think we'll get the other two, but get enough evidence to take to the prosecutor and make sure we get a conviction on all three will be good.
You have any idea on the number of homes involved?
There were, by these three people, there were 15 to 20 in Beach Grove, and outside of Beach Grove, there were 20 or 30 that we think these three were involved in.
Any update on the Walmart guy?
No, still chasing him around. The Sheriff's Department Warrant Division located him at least once, maybe twice, and he fled. And the guy knows the neighborhoods and has friends where he can hide, so it's, hopefully it doesn't take finding him in the woods, but if it happens, it happens.
Care to comment on the meeting with Motel 6?
Motel 6 seemed to go pretty well. They brought four representatives for the property owners, and I think that they're willing to do whatever it takes to make their property a better citizen for the city. They're willing to pay the fees that it takes to the ordinance. And the head man that came out, Mr. Glover, he was really energetic. It seemed like anything we needed as far as police-fire, they're willing to do, and I, I think that's encouraging, to have somebody of that property owner willing to take our advice and suggestions. I think it will turn out to be a good relationship.
What do you think, Craig? Craig was in attendance as well.
I thought it went very well. I thought he was very sincere, and I, I think we've kind of formed a partnership to address some of the issues on that property, so.
Any questions for?
Yes, Chief. Getting back to the heroin overdoses and so forth, are we finding a lot of dealers in the surrounding area of Beach Grove, or are they going out to get them, or do we have a problem?
We have a problem with users. As far as dealers, there's, there, that we know of, they're outside. Our guy that's in the DEA, he's dealing with a lot of that. But the, the dealers that we run into are mostly outside. It's a lot of users.
Any other questions for Mark? All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
That concludes any new business we have. I'll ask at this time for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:26 PM. We will meet again on Monday, November the 17th, in these chambers at 6:00 PM. The City Council begins at 7:00 PM tonight. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting this evening. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Common Council meeting for Monday, November the 3rd, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Mobley, City Councilman Large.
John Jennings, District 4.
Dave Harrison, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District 3.
Ed Bell, District 2.
Kathy Coats, Council at Large.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Council. There are no special presentations this evening. This time, I'll ask Mayor Ballard, the liaison, to step to the podium and update us on current events.
My name is Kelly Foulk, and I am the new Mayor's Neighborhood Liaison for Franklin and Perry Township, which includes Beach Grove. So I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself, and I am actually friends with Craig Wiley. He said if I mentioned that, that might give me some bonus points, but I really just want you to know his wife is my friend, so, you know, however that works out is fine.
Got your bullet on that one.
There you go, okay. So I don't know that I'll be at all of your meetings, but I am available. My phone number is the same as what Ashley Davis's was, my predecessor, so that's 317-429-7807. And my email is just like all the other city people. It's kelly.foulk@indy.gov, and I can send that to Craig, because I at least have his information, so that he can pass it on to the rest of you guys if you want.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Yes, it's F-O-U-L-K. And so I've already had the opportunity to meet with Laura Bernard, who is the Beach Grove Chamber person. She came downtown and met with my boss and I, and I just want to say that I look forward to working with you guys. I know that you're an excluded city, and so there's not a whole lot of stuff that we do, but we want to be a good neighbor to you, and whatever we can do, just feel free to contact me.
Thank you. Questions for the liaison? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Council, you have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated October the 6th. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have read the Beach Grove City Council meeting minutes for Monday, October 6th. I have read them, I understand them, and I motion we accept them as written.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Up next on the agenda is public comments, and I'll defer to city legal.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Two people have signed up to talk. The first is Mike Jarvis. Jarvis, would you please state your address? You have a few minutes.
Mike Jarvis, 73 South 2nd Avenue, Beach Grove. Make this short and sweet. I've brought it to many people's attention over the last three years, so I decided to come tonight and ask that we get a light on the American flag which flies over City Hall at night. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Ted Pearson?
I'm Ted Pearson, lives at 75 North 8th Avenue in Beach Grove. Mayor, Councilman, I would like to give great praise to the Street Department for putting up our flags for our beautifier Beach Grove organization. The second one I'd like to give praise to Tom Hanna for the weenie roast that we had down in the park. He furnished us with a pit, firewood, and forks, which I think they both need, all the people in their department need a good recognition for a fine job well done. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ted.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak that did not sign up?
Are you going to do General Ordinance 22 tonight? Then I'd like to speak, that's okay.
Step forward, Don.
Good evening. Donald Webb, 1331 Middleham Lane. I live in the community known as Carrington, where General Ordinance 22 is discussing putting in a speed limit, and the original ordinance suggested a speed limit of 20 miles an hour. Well, after the meeting, I believe it was in September, as I was going through my community, I noticed that the speed limit signs are 25 miles per hour, and so I would ask that you amend General Ordinance 22 to 25 miles an hour, because A, I've lived there 17 years, that's been the speed limit from the start. It's a safe speed limit. Curves and parked cars slow you down even further. It would save the taxpayers money of having to have people go out and put up new signs when they're already there. And speeding is a behavior. People ignore speed limits, so thinking that lowering the speed limit to 20 would somehow make the community safer, I think so far, is the only way you're going to do that is to allocate public safety resources to change that behavior. And truth be told, there's eight to 10 people that speed through our community. They're the same eight to 10 people who blow through the stop signs. They're the same eight to 10 people who get tickets out on Grove Wood where they do run radar. So I would urge you all to look at General Ordinance 22 and change that to 25, because your signs are there, then it would just be paperwork and we'd save some money. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald.
Anyone else who did not sign up that would like to speak? If not, we will close the public comments section. Committee reports, youth council. Hopefully, there's a couple students from the high school here. Could you step forward to the podium and give us an update on your events?
Hi, I'm Olivia Malone, and this is Sam Elliott, and we're part of the student leadership team at Beach Grove High School. And some current events that are happening are, as you may know, the football team just won their second round sectional game against Pendleton Heights, 46 to 0, and we move on this Friday to the sectional championship against New Powell. The FFA just had a convention last weekend in Kentucky, and we had one, one group of people who placed 14 out of 17, so they didn't move on to any further than nationals. Another thing that has happened is over fall break, Mr. Banks and Dr. Clark Edney at Purdue University hosted a biology camp where students go there, and they've performed research projects on things that they're interested in the biology field. Another thing is our drama department has, is going to be is going to be hosting A-Play Julius Caesar here in November, November 20th and 21st. And then we host the Nutcracker on December 20th and 21st. So if you'd like to attend those, those are happening.
And like Olivia said, our football season is coming to a close with sectionals. So we have winter sports coming up with girls and boys basketball. Girls on November 11th, and boys November 20th. And then we have a throwback at the middle school on the 29th against Manuel. And then also, as most people know, our community service was put back even further to November 12th because of weather conditions and safeties. And then after that, we will have a VIP breakfast for students that the teachers have picked to be best hardworking and best students in the class. Not like best overall grade-wise, but to show leadership and how a real student should be in Beach Grove High School. And then, I'm pretty sure that concludes news and updates about the Beach Grove High School.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? Don?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Sam. You didn't even say your name. You have to get on camera, make sure everybody knows your name.
I'm Sam Elliott.
Sam Elliott. The football game this week is where?
Home.
At home, so everybody should come and see them. Second round of the playoffs. They beat Pendleton Heights 46 to nothing last week. As I'm saying every meeting, come support your children. Did either of you attend the biology camp? How did you like it?
It was actually pretty fun. It was very interesting, and it's a great opportunity that they were providing us with.
And what did you do at your biology camp?
Over the summer, it's just a biology camp where it covers many fields of the biology, chemistry, those type of subjects. And then I went back for a research project. I'm researching gliobustoma brain tumor. And I'm just trying to decrease growth rates using a toxin called chlorotoxin. So I'm going to inject that into the cells and try and decrease the growth rates.
Excellent. Do they have a date for the next community service?
November 12th.
November 12th.
And then also on the football, everybody should attend, because we have a bonfire and cookout before the football game. Is it 6 o'clock? 6 o'clock, and anybody can attend. It's like over by the concession area, free food, nice bonfire.
They say who they play. Did they play?
Who will you play this week?
Perry, or no.
New Powell.
New Powell.
Evil and New Powell Dragons.
Yeah. It should be a good game.
And because I do it every time. Everybody sees on TV how bad today's kids are. This is what I see every day. Come support your kids. These are two wonderful examples of what's going right in Beach Grove. I know Olivia and Sam both, from watching her play basketball, and she hangs out with my daughter. So go out, see the basketball team, see the basketball team. Go support your Beach Grove youth. They'll make you incredibly proud, incredibly proud. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I would like to say something too about the young people. When I went to Arlington Cemetery last year with the Honor Flight, the young kids come up and hugged us, shook their hands and kissed us, and thanked us for a well-jogged gun. Which is not a public sight. You don't see that in the face. We have an awful lot of good young kids out there, and they appreciate it.
Greenscape Report. Tim?
Well, that's embarrassing. Tim Latimer, Beach Grove Greenscape Commission. We did meet at our last meeting. Everyone was present. That was on the 20th of October. Really, we just talked about, we had three topics that we discussed. Sister Sheila gave us a recap of the Arbor Day Tree Ceremony that took place at Our Lady of Grace Monastery. A scarlet oak was planted. About a dozen volunteers helped plant wildflowers and shrubs at the Peace Garden. We also reviewed a sidewalk policy that Dave Miller put together. And Dave spent a lot of time on this. He reviewed policies from several other cities and developed this policy, which offers a simple solution for trees that are in conflict with city sidewalks. It offers flexibility as well, and should be something the city can work with. He has since then submitted this to Brad Meriwether. So we reviewed that, talked about it. And like I say, he's given that to Brad. And then our final topic was whether or not the city has a storm response plan. We believe that the next time we file for tree city certification, they're going to ask if we have a storm response plan, and what does it involve, and who will we call, et cetera, if something happens again like the tornadoes a few years ago. So do we have a plan like that in effect?
Yes, it might need to be updated. It's through the police and fire department, and your portion of it would be through Complete Tree Service.
Okay. Well, we thought that was Complete, or Davy. Yeah, one of the two. Well, next year, maybe we can update that, and then that'll serve as one of the requirements for, again, another tree city recertification, which always comes at this time of the year. And we've got all of our ducks in a row. And Beth will be sending that out probably in the next couple of weeks. And not only will Beach Grove receive the Tree City Certification Award again, but we are also going to receive a growth award this year for some extra things that we have done in this past year. And that's all I have for you. Our next meeting will be on the 17th, Monday night, 17th, at the Community Center. As always, the public is invited to attend.
Questions for Tim?
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
RDC report and the public safety report is on file. Financial report from the Clerk Treasurer.
Dear counsel, tonight we have transfer requests that do not raise the budget and additional appropriation requests that do raise the budget. The $400,000 is for paving, and that will be funded by transferring the 2012 return on investment payment from sewage to corporate per Jip Peters. We also have the following additional appropriations. $19,000 for public safety. $15,000 council professional attorney fees to fund the OGO3 invoice related to the investigation of the Clerk Treasurer's office. $41,000 overtime for fire for the remainder of the year. $15,000 repair and maintenance. $15,000 for computers for the police. $20,000 overtime for the police, and $11,000 medical supplies for the fire. The 2014 budget increased over a quarter of a million dollars from 2013. Category 1 personnel expenses, with the exception of overtime, and Category 4 debt service have stayed within the budget. We also have on the agenda tonight an ordinance for first reading for the 2015 Tax Anticipation Ward. As in past, this ordinance will be approved before the Indiana Bond Bank determines the amount needed for the 2015 Tax Anticipation Ward. We are fortunate to have the credit rating to be able to use the Indiana Bond Bank because of low interest rate they offer, and they determine the amount needed and the ability to repay. The Insurance Committee met on October 24th. As stated before, the committee consists of Aron Tannetti Fire Department, James Bond Police Department, Rodney Giffen, DPW, and citizens David Irwin and Don Wayland and myself. Christian Duncan is working to review different scenarios we can use to keep the cost down for the city and employees. We will be meeting again as soon as he has these figures firmed up. Also, I have been working on the renewal for the liability insurance for 2015. That will go before the Board of Works for approval in December. We made our first of 10 lease purchase payments for the Skid steer, and the amount of payment was $7,892.73. We make two payments per year. State Board of Accounts still has not released the audit for public consumption. As soon as they do, I will email a copy to all of you. I am expecting that very soon, but until that time, I cannot release the results. The city website continues to be a success and is provided at no cost to the taxpayer. We continue to have wonderful volunteers that assist with updating and posting. Thank you, website volunteers. The website this month, this past month, had a total of 38,000 visits, which I think is exceptional. The homepage on the website has city meetings, information, that include links to agendas, minutes, ordinances, and more. Financial reports, city debt schedules, bank statements, and more are all available online at www.beachgrove.com. The bank balances are listed on the website as well as on the city website and also here for the council tonight. As always, my door is open if you have any questions. Thank you.
Questions for the clerk?
I just have one question on the website. You know that there's 38,000 views, but is there any way of tracking, like what they're looking at? Are they watching meetings?
Absolutely. I can get you a copy of that report that I have available to me each month. So if you'd like to see that, yeah, it's pretty interesting to see where it's at.
Okay.
One of the big days was actually on the 31st of October, and people checking to find out what time Halloween was, see if it was canceled, if we were still doing it. So it does tell you a lot of different places where they're going to on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for the clerk? If not, we'll move to, Compliance Division did not report as of yet. So when their report comes in, we'll pass it on to you. That concludes committee reports on unfinished business, carried over from the previous meeting. General Ordinance Number 18-2014 is up for second reading only. And I will ask the clerk to read it into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 18-2014 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to heavy items. Whereas, in the past, the city picked up appliances left out in the trash for disposal, and whereas the cost to dispose of heavy items collected by Public Works employees continued to rise, and whereas some heavy items have been found to carry coolant gases, which are dangerous for our employees to handle, and whereas trash pickers or other scavengers generally collect these items prior to the arrival of Public Works employees. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 96, Section 96.05 of the Code of Ordinances. Now therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires that the following amendments be included as follows. Section 96.04 rates for collection of heavy items. Delete in its entirety and replace with the following. Section 96.04, collection of heavy appliances and items. The following items will not be picked up by employees of the Department of Public Works or any authorized agent on behalf of the City of Beach Grove. Stoves, refrigerators, freezers, microwave ovens, washers, dryers, dishwasher, water heaters, furnaces, outdoor grills, air conditioning units, dehumidifiers, and any other appliance deemed hazardous or dangerous by the director of the department. Section 96.06, exception for appliance containing freon gases. Delete in its entirety and replace with the following. Section 96.06, freon and other gases and liquids. Nowwithstanding 96.04 or any other provision, employees of the Department of Public Works shall not handle any object, container, or appliance that could or does contain a combustible liquid, combustible gas, flammable gas, or flammable liquid. Citizens who place these items out for disposal shall be informed that a licensed private technician or company must dispose of these items. The city cannot dispose of these items for them. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend the Code of Ordinances pursuant to this matter. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to the above listed ordinance. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Motion to approve General Ordinance Number 18-2014 on second reading only.
Make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on third reading on December the 1st. General Ordinance Number 22-2014 is up for second reading. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 22-2014 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 77 of the City of Beach Grove Code of Ordinances concerning speed limits in the Carrington and Park Meadow subdivisions in the City of Beach Grove. Whereas newer subdivisions have not been updated in the Code of Ordinances pursuant to speed limits, and whereas issuing traffic citations may be compromised as a result of not being approved by the legislative body, and whereas citizens who live and travel in these areas should be informed as to what the speed limit is and to have it posted in these areas. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council of the City of Beach Grove desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances pursuant to speed limits. Now therefore, be it further ordained that the following amendment be added to Chapter 77. Schedule 4, Speed Limits, A, Schedule. Schedule 4, Speed Limits, A, Schedule. 2. Motor vehicle speed on the following streets shall be limited to no faster than 20 miles per hour. Please add the following. Location: Rutherford Ham Lane, Rutherford Ham Circle, Valburn Court, Clausen Lane, Charnwood Parkway, Timbrook Lane, Timbrook Circle, Middleham Lane, Middleham Circle, Danville Lane, Park Meadow Drive, Park Meadow Way, Park Meadow Court. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to the above mentioned chapter of the Code of Ordinances. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
General Ordinance Number 22-2014 is up for second reading. Ask for a motion to approve.
Make said motion.
I have a question. In Park Meadow, are there speed limit signs there now?
I don't know.
I mean, I've been through there 100 times, but guess I don't look. And I just wondered if there are speed limit signs.
You're going too fast.
Huh? I probably am.
You haven't seen the signs.
I mean, I don't know.
There is a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 22-2014 on second reading only.
Are we going to amend it to the 25 miles?
That's up to the council.
I would like to propose that we amend this ordinance number 22 to the speed limit being 25 miles per hour versus 20 miles per hour.
There's a motion to amend. I need a second.
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Nay.
John and Anthony?
Yes.
Now, General Ordinance Number 22-2014 is up for second reading with the amendment. Ask for a motion to approve.
Make said motion.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We'll hear it on third and final reading at the December 1st council meeting.
Was that at 6:00?
I don't know.
Was anyone opposed to?
No.
Thank you, counsel. General Ordinance Number 23-2014 is up for second reading only this evening. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 23-2014 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to charges for heavy collections. Whereas citizens sometimes set more disposable items out for pickup than normal, and whereas citizens during the year often conduct major cleanings and accumulate more trash than normal, and whereas the cost to dispose of trash continues to rise, and whereas often citizens remove branches and limbs from trees in their respective yard and place them with the trash for disposal. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances for heavy trash and brush pickup. Now therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires that this amendment be made. be made. Ninety-Six Point Two Five, Charges for Special Collections. Delete in its entirety and replace with the following. Ninety-Six Point Two Five, Charges for Heavy Trash Pickup and Brush Removal. Fees for the collection of heavy trash and brush are hereby fixed and established by the common council according to the following guidelines. A, Heavy Trash. One, Minimum Charge is twenty-five dollars. The Director of the Department of Public Works has the authority to increase the charge based on what has been placed out for pickup. The amount of time to pick up, quantity of trash, and the weight of the trash placed out for the disposal are factors in determining the appropriate charge. Two, Maximum Charge, five hundred dollars. The Director of the Department of Public Works shall not exceed this amount for the charge to remove heavy trash. Three, The Resident or Property Owner shall agree to the preset amount prior to any heavy trash being removed. Four, Upon Agreement of the Set Price, the heavy trash will be removed and the service charge will be placed on the next available Beach Grove Sewage Works Bill. The, number five, the date and time of heavy trash pickup will be at the convenience of the Department of Public Works. Number six, The Director of the Department of Public Works has the authority to refuse to pick up heavy trash based on health, environmental, or other conditions presented. B, Brush. One, Minimum Charge is twenty-five dollars. The Director of the Department of Public Works has the authority to increase that charge based on the amount of brush placed out for disposal, the amount of time, and to either ship or remove, including using a payloader, all factors is on the charge. Two, Maximum Charge is eight hundred dollars. The Director of the Department of Public Works shall not exceed this amount for the charge to remove brush. Three, The Resident or Property Owner shall agree to the preset amount prior to any brush being removed. Four, Upon Agreement by, upon agreement, the brush will be removed and the agreed set price, agreed to, will be placed on the next available Beach Grove Sewage Works Bill. Five, The Date and Time for Brush Removal will be at the convenience of the Department of Public Works. Six, The Director of the Department of Public Works has the discretion to waive any and all fees for the removal of brush due to storms, accidents, or any other acts of nature. Seven, The Director of the Department of Public Works has the discretion to not to pick up brush based on the conditions presented at the time of inspection. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter Ninety-Six of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to the above-mentioned section. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect sixty days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Twenty-three, Two Thousand and Fourteen is up for second reading or approval for second reading only. Ask for motion to approve.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm not against this, but I, I feel like it's real nebulous about how are we gonna enforce it? Who gets, how long do they have to agree? You know, the director's gonna put out a price, and they're gonna say, "I'm not paying that." And what's the, I, I just don't see how this is gonna really work.
We do it every day. It's done every day. People call for heavy trash pickup or brush. And, uh, what we wanna do, we don't wanna be taken advantage of.
Mm-hmm. I, I get on that, but I...
And then also, uh, it's very time-consuming. And two guys could be, uh, half a day on one address.
Okay.
Especially when it comes to brush.
Right.
And sometimes, Kathy, believe it or not, there's a brush pile that will go the whole length of their property, which is forty feet, and there's no trees on the property. So it's brought in from somewhere else. So, and we don't want to be taken like that.
Right.
So this is the happy medium.
But I'm saying, right now, we're not charging, correct?
No, we charge.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is just normalizing it, or setting higher prices?
No, this is just, this is just updating the ordinance. The ordinance hasn't been updated in years.
But updating in what way? By raising the fees?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's fine. I'm just, I just, I have a blockage on this. It just seems, I can't, it doesn't make sense to me. But, okay, I mean, I, I understand what you said, and if we're doing it already, that's fine. I just guess I don't understand what they're gonna do if they can't come to an agreement on the fee.
Then they can, then they can get it hauled off on their own.
Then that's their, their...
It's the homeowner's responsibility to take care of it.
All right.
They can take it themselves to the dump.
Bit it out, cheapest price.
Right.
Gotcha.
I would like to amend on paragraph A, Heavy Trash, fourth sentence down, end the sentence in, bill, like you read it, but it was missing. I just wanna make sure it's, so we'll read, "On the next available Beach Grove Sewage Works Bill." It's how you read it. I just wanna make sure it's corrected.
Right. Okay, that's an amendment? Ask for a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
General Ordinance Number Twenty-three is up for second reading only. Approval with the amendment. So I ask for motion to approve General Ordinance Number Twenty-three, Two Thousand and Fourteen on second reading only.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on third reading, December first, meeting. Thank you. That concludes old business under new business. We have, going to hear the Two Thousand and Fifteen RDC budget. The RDC president is here, Don. You wanna go off this one? And before we get into it, Don, could you explain the procedure as to why the council needs to hear it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I can. Many of you have seen in the, in the news lately how the Carmel Redevelopment Commission is basically at war with the city council and the mayor because they have spent millions, they have got half a billion dollars in debt, and there's concern that they are now a rogue agency out of control with spending. So our state legislature amended the RDC law, basically to where every year now, the RDC will submit to you a budget proposal of what we intend to spend in fiscal year Two Thousand and Fifteen. Our budget was a little complicated because Saint Francis came on the property tax roll, so this spring we got roughly three hundred and forty-three thousand, and in November we'll get another three hundred and forty-three thousand. But they have appealed this. And in talking to Jeff Peters, this can go on for a long time, 'cause, I mean, eventually they'll run through different sets of courts to where they can ultimately go to the State Supreme Court to have this settled. So this year and next year, we should have about one point four million in money from Saint Francis that we will not be able to touch until they either drop it or we win it. So we had to take that out of the picture, but it's sitting there just in case. I mean, cross your fingers that we would win it, but as you have heard, Saint Francis is in the process of being sold. So if it's sold, the other thing the RDC will be facing in future years is part of that sale is Marion County has given the Saint Francis property a five-year abatement on property taxes. So I think if they sell it this year, it'd be starting in Two Thousand and Sixteen, they will go to Two Thousand and Twenty-One and not be paying property taxes. So that's another source of revenue that we will not have for that. So in looking at our budget, our goal was to do, in Two Thousand and Thirteen, we basically did nothing. This past year, we have got the rock pile, which we will be having groundbreaking, I believe, on the twelfth of November. Property that sat vacant for, what, fifty, sixty years, is now gonna have nice senior living apartments on it, a, you know, clubhouse and all that. That, that is one thing. We did get Digital City down, and right now, I'm looking, I talked to a vendor today, it piled the possibility of getting all that stuff out of the old firehouse and out of the DPW and getting it basically sold off. So that's another thing we've accomplished, and really, I think we had a pretty good year. I think we have moved past the negativity that was associated with the RDC. And if you look at this budget, I feel like there's a lot of positives in this budget going forward. The main thing we focused on is infrastructure and quality of life for our citizens. And if you look at it, we focused, I asked all the different departments and agencies, are there projects we can work with you on? And the Beach Grove Parks Department was the one that stepped up and said, "Hey, we have got a laundry list of things we'd like to do to make, you know, the park systems better." And what I like about this budget is, this isn't money being given to a company or corporation. This is money that will be spent on citizens, the people who use this park for the Fourth of July. And, you know, one of the things I like is, we're talking about running water back to the shelters. That'll make the shelters much nicer. It'll help rent them out, which is, what, a source of revenue for the parks. Uh, the other thing I like is, community park, we're gonna fix the parking lot over there. Gonna put in new carpet, 'cause I believe the mayor said it's been, what, twenty years? Twenty years is a long time for carpet.
Where?
Uh, Hornet Park Community Center.
Hornet Park.
I'm sorry if I said that wrong. So, I mean, those, to me, when you look at this budget, are things that, again, the community uses these things, the other agencies use these things. The one thing we really, that I would have liked to have done, is repave the road in the park, but we just don't have the money for that with not having Saint Francis. But, um, uh, one of the things we do have in here is, we had a hundred and seventy-five thousand that we were gonna propose to dedicate for street repair for Beach Grove and Tiff areas. Now, we have talked to the mayor about that, and there is a grant for the Churchman Sidewalk Project that we will talk about, but the RDC is talking about using the hundred and thirty-four thousand of that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to help fund the first year of that grant and to actually work on funding that grant all four years, because, is it one point two million?
Yes.
So to spend three hundred thousand to get one point two million is a good deal, and again, that's helping sidewalks by the school, safe, public safety and all that. One part of the seventy-five thousand, or that part I haven't looked at too, but I would like to maybe look at the spring, is, I've noticed along Emerson Avenue, I see people walking all the time to their jobs and stuff, and it's a shame that Emerson Avenue does not have a sidewalk along it. I think that is dangerous, and there is a public safety need there, so that's one of the things the RDC, 'cause it would be connected by the Lowe's, Walmart, Tiff, maybe look at running that down to Emerson Avenue, and then, maybe in Two Thousand and Sixteen, another area I see a ton of people walking is from Emerson Avenue along Thompson Avenue to the apartments and the houses. I think that's another area that's in need of sidewalk for safety. So those are future areas, but if you look, um, we've got a list of projects now, and we're doing stuff. So I think the RDC is trying to turn the corner and to make more positive inroads into Beach Grove and make it a better community.
Questions for Don?
I just have a statement. If you could get Emerson, a sidewalk on Emerson, on Thompson, I'd vote for you for governor.
Well, I mean...
They push wheelchairs up and down Thompson.
Yes, they do. And see, and that's what I'm saying, I see that all the time, and that's one of those things where I think, I don't know if we have to talk to Marion County, but at least on our side of Emerson Avenue, it's a crime, because you can see a worn tra, and in the morning, 'cause I, I go to work at five-thirty, you'll see people standing out there waiting on the bus. And, I mean, we owe it to the people of Beach Grove and around here to have a sa, and, I mean, you look at the traffic, I mean, it's just a matter of time before somebody slips, trips their ankle, and falls out into the street and gets run over by somebody. And I just, like I say, if that's something we could do this year with, 'cause like I say, we've, we've committed to the hundred and thirty-four thousand, or we will commit, but we, we'll have twenty-some thousand left, and if we can run some sidewalk along there, I think it's, you know, a good idea. And one of the other things that we're still looking at that's on here is, we're looking at a signage grant. In other words, Janice King is our leader on this particular project, and her goal is to make signage along Main Street more uniformed and of better quality, so it makes the Main Street area more attractive. That's something we're working on too, and the idea along that is that we do, like, say, a fifty-fifty match for signage up to, say, a thousand or five hundred dollars. Again, working with local business to improve that area. That's something I'm hoping that we'll be able to get implemented and do in Two Thousand and Fifteen as well. And one final, I guess, a couple of final notes. First, I would, since this is, I would like to thank the five members, Kathy Chapel, Ron Moat, Janice King, and Tanny, Mac Bellner, and Tammy, the story? Story. These people do not get paid. They volunteer their time. They take time out of their work or at home. They come to at least one meeting a month. We've had a couple of meet, months of two meetings, so, um, it's a volunteer board that takes on a tremendous amount of responsibility, so I'd like to publicly thank all them for their work, 'cause, you know, they get, they've gotten a lot of grief in the past, and there's absolutely zero glory associated with it. And the other thing was, I've put in the notes, is, I've asked all of you to at least attend two RDC meetings next year. The mayor's attended all, but I think two, and having partnership and working with him has given us more input, and I'd like your folks' input as well, because, again, your constituents talk to you, and if you watch any of our meetings on TV, most of the time you're seeing everybody that's there in the camera. So we don't get a lot of participation, so if you hear from your constituents, it would help us to hear from you to see what the community thinks about what we're doing and what projects they may think are worthwhile.
Well, Don, we need to thank you as well. You left yourself out. But you're talking about the projects on Emerson and Thompson. The project on Churchman is gonna go from Church, on Churchman, from Emerson to Arlington, and what John said was the very reason that that project scored a hundred percent within that, was because people in wheelchairs was on Churchman Avenue.
Yeah, that's, like I say, we, I think it's something we can possibly do, at least on Emerson there, that we should definitely look at.
The issue you're gonna find, because we've looked into it before, the issue you're gonna find is that it's not our property. Emerson is not just a Beach Grove thoroughfare. You'd have to partner with her, because Thompson and Emerson are both...
I, I know we've had this hostility, or I've heard hostility, or that we're Beach Grove and we're not Indianapolis, but we're in the same county, we're in the same country, and yes, I probably would like to look at the folks from Indianapolis.
I don't think that that's a barrier anymore.
It shouldn't be. I mean, this is a partnership, because, again, we have residents across the street that are Indianapolis, that it'll benefit both of us, and it's safety.
I didn't mean it in a hostile way.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're...
I just meant, it's not just ours.
Right.
We have to partner to get it done.
Well, and I'm hoping that they would be willing to do that as well. Oh, and one final thing I wanted to mention real quick, I wanted to thank Dan also, because we were able to, thankfully, he got back off vacation in the nick of time, and we were able to sign the Brownfields Grant. So we were able to use all of that hundred and fifty-nine thousand on that grant. And Dan, as the RDC treasurer, needed to be there to sign it, so I wanna thank him for doing that and thank Craig for his help on that. But, um, we have moved forward, and we will no longer, I think after this month, be paying the sewer bill for that place. That'll be paid by the NRP Group, so that property is no longer yours, gentlemen, ladies, it is now somebody else's.
All right, any questions for Don? What we'll do, Don, is the council has to approve your budget, so, uh, we'll bring it up in December and meeting, unless the council wants to go ahead and approve it
I personally am up to date on the budget. I went through it. I looked at it. Is there anybody opposed to voting? It's not my job, sorry.
I'll ask for motion to approve the RDC budget for Two Thousand and Fifteen.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Pardon me.
Uh, next order of new business is Resolution Number Ten, Two Thousand and Fourteen. I'll defer to Councilor Davidson.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number Ten, Two Thousand and Fourteen is a resolution that clarifies the monies dispersed to the Beach Grove Police Department, whereas the Beach Grove Police Department participates in DEA and other state and federal agency special assignments; and whereas DEA and other state and federal agencies pay for salaries of the officers that participate in the assignments; and whereas monies issued to the City of Beach Grove for these special assignments are currently distributed in the incorrect accounts; and whereas the City of Beach Grove must credit the correct fund in accordance with Indiana Code Six-Dash-One Point One-Dash-Eighteen-Dash-Seven Point Five. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the City of Beach Grove desires all monies obtained from federal and state agencies for officers assigned to special assignments shall be distributed to the Police Department Fund. Now therefore be it further resolved that this resolution shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Floor is open for questions or comments.
I'd like to make a comment. He put in there, in the third paragraph, incorrect accounts that they're distributed into, and that is not correct. They are going into the correct accounts. I've talked with Charlie Pryd down at State Board of Accounts, and he agreed with that when I spoke with him on it.
What accounts are they going into now?
Uh, general fund. And that's where they need to go, along with the same thing, if the fire department, for example, their ambulance goes into the general fund, the parks department, anything they collect money on goes into the general fund. The, any permits done in the clerk treasurer's office goes into the general fund. Senior center, uh, parks department, they all go into the general fund, and then they're redistributed to, uh, the majority of it going back to public safety, but that's what funds your budget for the year, and this is reckless from the standpoint of, if this is approved, then the fire department next month could come back and ask for a million dollars that they take in off ambulance reimbursement. Where are you gonna be at, and where are you gonna stop it? My question would be, if that's the case, where would the council fund the budget that we just approved?
Dan, you're talking about two totally separate things.
No, it's not.
Absolutely. Absolutely. This is totally separate things. This is money that, when our officers are paid overtime to go and perform special assignments, this is money reimbursed back to them. This is not reimbursed back to the city.
Who pays their overtime? The city of Beach Grove out of the general-
This is so we don't have to continually make adjustments to their budget when they run out of overtime.
We, we don't have to. First of all-
We're doing it tonight.
Their budget used to be thirty thousand dollars before I came into office. That was their overtime budget. This here only amounts to about thirty thousand. This year here, they got fifty thousand in the budget, fifty thousand in, uh, overtime from public safety, and now we're doing an additional appropriation tonight for twenty thousand. So, their overtime budget is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, not thirty thousand dollars that this is. This would create havoc on your entire budget.
I have a question. I don't recall the State Board of Accounts and the audit typically talking about having a problem here. Am I correct?
You're absolutely correct, and if there was a problem with the way this was being handled, they would have brought it forward. Exactly.
What monies are we talking that they bring in? I mean, is this what we're talking about?
This is the, uh, for, like, seatbelt grants, uh, uh, where the officer goes out and works overtime for seatbelts, or, uh, I'm trying to think, the, um, the OP grant that they do. Uh, these are just special assignments that the police officers do, and the Marion County writes us a check for reimbursement, because we pay this out of the general fund of the city.
Does Indiana Code Six One specifically say that it needs to go into a-
General fund.
It, it, it quotes here, Code Six One, and it says it can go in the general fund?
It says it should go into the general fund, and that's where it's been, that's where it's historically always gone.
Just because that's what we've always done doesn't mean it's right.
No, it, it goes into the general fund.
Craig, do you know anything about-
I, I don't. I, not, not off the top of my head, I don't.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to put you in a spot.
Craig, I really hate to drag you in this, but could you research this for us, for us for next month's meeting? And that way, we can have yet another party.
Sure.
We'll have to pay for it. I don't know.
Would that be okay, Craig?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Can we table this for a month?
Sure. Motion to table.
I'll make that motion. We table Resolution Number Ten, two thousand and fourteen, until we get, uh-
Actually, we have some experts here tonight, if they wanna, if they wanna talk, you know, about it.
Experts on the budget?
I can invite myself to the podium, but if you want me to, I'll answer questions about it.
Can I have it next meeting?
That's up to you.
I would, I would like to hear from the attorney, to hear what the attorney has to say. I'd like for him to be well-versed in it, when I have your opinion also. Would that be okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You'll be here at next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to table, and we'll need a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
We will hear this on December the first. General Ordinance Number Twenty-four, two thousand and fourteen, is up for first reading only, and at this time, I'll defer to the clerk to, uh, introduce it into the, uh, record, please.
General Ordinance Number Twenty-four, two thousand and fourteen, is an ordinance that amounts to Chapter Thirty-three, the Code of Ordinances, for the City of Beach Grove concerning the police chief and the criminal investigation fund for the Beach Grove Police Department, whereas the Beach Grove Police Department has had a number of years a criminal investigation fund, and whereas the criminal investigation fund is under the direct control of the police chief, and whereas the police chief and clerk treasurer are the only two people that has access over the fund, and whereas the police chief has the authority to purchase equipment and other approved supplies through the criminal investigation fund to fight crime and prevent criminal activities throughout our city. Now therefore be it ordained that the common counsel desires to amend Chapter Thirty-three of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove based on a recommendation from the State Board of Accounts during an annual audit. Now therefore be it further ordained that the common counsel desires that the following amendment be placed in the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Add the following, thirty-three point oh-one, police chief, C, criminal investigation fund. One, the police chief has the authority to use criminal investigative funds to conduct police business and undercover direct purchasing operations. Two, the police chief or designe has the authority to pay for the purchase of drugs by using cash. Three, the clerk treasurer has the authority to issue a check to the police chief from the criminal investigation fund to be cashed for the purpose of conducting undercover direct purchasing operations with documentation that the check was issued. Four, the police chief and clerk treasurer have the authority to make a transaction prior to approval of any governing board. Now therefore be it ordained that the common counsel of the City of Beach Grove desires to amend the Code of Ordinances pursuant to Chapter Thirty-three. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to Chapter Thirty-three of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common counsel, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Before I open it up for questions or comments, I'll defer back to the clerk, uh, for explanation from the State Board of Accounts.
Okay, what actually happened on this? Uh, we haven't done it many times, but Marcus came to me and said, "I need money for a drug buy," or whatever, and with the State Board of Accounts, they have no problem with this. The problem being is, we did not have an ordinance for him to receive a check for that purchase. So, basically, alls we're doing is clearing the way and protecting Mark and myself for issuing this check. It's been brought before the council and legislative body, and-
Can you throw in there every once in a while that you're saying you're using this for undercover? You're, you're not just going out buying drugs.
No. Were you, it, it's a March discretion. It's used for anything that he feels the need that would help the Police Department. Uh, you know, I mean, there's federal regulations and things that he has to follow, but for the most part, it's his, at his discretion. I just write the check, and then he takes care of it from there.
Now, the floor is open for questions or comments.
I just wanna make sure I understand this one. So, Mark's, you know, doing some kind of an investigation, and he says we need fifty thousand dollars to do something. He comes to you and asks for that specific amount, and then takes that specific amount. How do we account for it after that? Does we just-
I'm sure that he's got some way that he tracks it. Uh, the federal government just wouldn't let him have fifty thousand, you know, and he's gonna have to explain exactly why and what he did with this money. That's out of my realm. That's entirely up to him, and he may wanna comment.
FBI, I do a report every February, a yearly report. I have to, uh, itemize each purchase, and what was spelled, and then it gets sent back to the federal government, and my figures have to match their figures, and they, they, it's a compliment.
And, and what are you doing now if you, let's say that same thing comes up now, and we're just doing that, we just haven't formally blessed it?
It doesn't change anything for us, it's just-
Okay. All right, I got it. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for motion to approve General Ordinance Number Twenty-four, two thousand and fourteen, on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on second reading only at the December first meeting. General Ordinance Number Twenty-five, two thousand and fourteen, is up for first reading only this evening, and I will defer to the clerk for explanation, please.
Okay, what this is, is our annual tax anticipation warrant that we have gotten ever since we've been in office, and what it amounts to is, they give the council very little information as to how much we're borrowing, what the interest rate is, but it's always been very advantageous for the city to do this. I believe our current interest rate for this year was zero point seven-six percent interest, and previously, under the past administration, they always had to go through Regions Bank, and it was significantly more. We do a lot of business with Regions, but this is the best deal that's out there, so that's basically all we're doing, is, uh, passing an ordinance. I have to have an ordinance to move forward with the, uh, tax anticipation.
Could you tell me what a tax anticipation warrant is, quickly?
That is where we borrow enough money from the Indiana Bond Bank to last us for next year. We do not have enough cash on hand to operate without this, so this is the only way this city could operate at the present time.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council? If not, I will ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only, please.
I'll make said motion. I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number Twenty-five, two thousand and fourteen, is up for first reading, uh, only. I'll ask the clerk treasurer to read the ordinance by title only, please.
And, uh, Ordinance Twenty-five, two thousand and fourteen, is an ordinance authorizing the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, to make temporary loans to meet current running expenses for the use of the general fund, the debt service fund, the fire pension fund, and the police pension fund of the issuer in anticipation of and not in excess of current taxes levied in the year two thousand and fourteen and collectible in the year two thousand and fifteen. Authorizing the issuance of temporary loan tax anticipation warrants to evidence such loans and the sale of such warrants to the Indiana Bond Bank, and appropriating and pledging the taxes to be received in such funds to the punctual payment of such warrants, including the interest thereon.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Twenty-five, two thousand and fourteen, is up for, uh, recommended to be approved on first reading only. Ask for motion to approve.
I'll make that.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on second and third reading at the December first meeting. Thank you. General Ordinance Number Twenty-six, two thousand and fourteen, is up for first reading only. This time, I will defer to the clerk to, uh, explain the ordinance, please.
Okay, what this is, is, uh, I'll go through part of it. This is where we're going now and asking for additional appropriations to meet our budget and what we've actually spent in excess of our budget. For personal services, for perf, we've asked for nineteen thousand. Uh, for the council, for attorney fees related to the investigation of the clerk treasurer, fifteen thousand. Fire, personal services, overtime, forty-one thousand dollars. Police, other services and charges, repairs and maintenance, fifteen thousand. Police capital outlays, computers, fifteen thousand. Police personal services, overtime, twenty thousand. Fire supplies, medical, eleven thousand, and the Board of Works, capital outlay, street projects, four hundred thousand. This four hundred thousand, we took as a return on investment in the year two thousand and twelve, where we did not take it in two thousand and twelve, because the funds were not available. This year, this four hundred thousand was available, so we're taking it as a return on investment in the year two thousand and fourteen, which is completely, uh, legal to do.
I would hope so.
All right, this time, I'll ask, uh, the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
Okay. Additional appropriation ordinance, Number Twenty-six. Whereas it has been determined that that is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, section one be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council, Beach Grove Civil City, Marion County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated, transferred, or reduced out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Public safety, Loewitz Fund, personal services, perf, nineteen thousand dollars. General fund, council, attorney fees related to investigation of clerk treasurer, fifteen thousand. Fire, personal services, overtime, forty-one thousand. Police, other services, repairs and maintenance, fifteen thousand. Police capital outlays, computers, fifteen thousand. Police personal services, overtime, twenty thousand. Fire, medical supplies, eleven thousand, and Board of Works, capital outlay, street projects, four hundred thousand, for a total of five hundred and seventeen thousand.
Thank you. Floor is open for questions or comments.
Got a question about, excuse me, the budget for two thousand and fifteen. Were these amounts accounted for in that budget, so we won't end up in the same spot a year from now, or are these so unexpected, we couldn't have?
I certainly hope so, but there's no guarantee. The budget is nothing more than a guesstimate, and the four hundred thousand, naturally, it would not be in there, but, uh, yeah, I cannot give you a definitive answer on that.
And because we budgeted to what we anticipated, you know, it coming in, going out, what's the bottom-line impact to the budget for the year end this year? Is it gonna put us into a deficit?
No. No, this is to keep us from going into a deficit.
I just wanna make sure everybody knows that we have the money to cover this.
Yes, everything, the way it appears, I ran it by Jeff Peters, he agrees with all of it, and, uh, before it is, you guys approve it, I also have to send it to the DLGF, uh, the first week of December, and then they will approve it. So, if there's any problem whatsoever, they would not approve it.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from council? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the additional appropriation ordinance, Number Twenty-six, two thousand and fourteen, on first reading only.
Make said motion. I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
We will hear it on second and third reading at the December first meeting.
Second and third?
Second and third reading, at the December first meeting. Thank you.
That's because it has to go to the DLGF.
It has to be in by the fifteenth of December. Is that right, Dan?
Yes, uh, they will not do any additional appropriations after December the fifteenth, so the day after our meeting, I will mail it to them, so they will have it to, uh, do all the looking at they need to do and approving it.
Thank you.
Like, last order of business is not on your agenda. Transfer funds in the Sewage Works Department. I'll defer to the clerk for explanation.
Okay, these are actually, uh, funds that we need to shore up to make sure we do not, uh, run in the red anywhere in the city's department budgets. Uh, this is something that we've done every year, and, uh, so I'm asking for approval to do these.
If we would, if we could, uh, read them into the record, please.
Okay. Transfer twenty-nine hundred dollars from MVH Skid Steer Lease Principal to MVH Fuel. Transfer eleven hundred dollars from MVH Skid Steer Lease Interest to MVH Fuel. Transfer thirteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twelve cents from insurance reimbursement to road sign grants. Transfer up to five thousand dollars from the Board of Work Crossing Guards to road sign grants. Transfer three thousand dollars to MVH Skid Steer Lease Principal to road sign grants. Transfer up to fifty thousand from the sewage, uh, grant and debt accounts to the Main Street redevelopment grant for sewage stormwater work completed. Transfer seventy-five thousand from sewage MOU to the one sixty sewage IDPW category. Transfer three- Transfer $3,000 from sewage unemployment to sewage postage. Transfer 4,000 from sewage retirement insurance to sewage postage. Transfer 15,000 from sewage unemployment to recording fees. Transfer up to 17,000 from regular salaries to sewage landfill charges. Transfer up to 11,000 from regular salaries to sewage refunds. Transfer up to 4,000 from sewage health savings to sewage refunds. And that is it. And some of the documentation I gave you earlier, which I know it's kind of overloaded, but it helps document what I did on these transfers and why I came up with them. And so if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Floor is open for questions or comments. There's no questions or comments, I'll ask for motion to approve the transfers listed below.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Transfers approved. That concludes new business. Time for council comments, beginning on my far right.
I want to thank the ones that showed up tonight and let's all try to be at the high school Friday night. Let's support our football team. Thank you.
I think the flag over the, or the light on the flag over the city hall should, should be taken care of pretty quick. That's something that's pretty obvious we need to have done. If it's going to take a little bit of money to do it, I'm sure we can get enough people to donate. I'll be the first one to donate. If you can put the other price and tell me what it's going to cost, I'm sure enough people will think it's a good idea to have that done. Also, Craig, I'm sorry that I threw that in your lap. I hope you're able to come to an agreement with Dan and with the police department so that by the time we come here next month that everybody's much on the same page. But I appreciate you letting me drop that in your lap. Thank you.
Yeah, just thank everybody for coming and appreciate the youth council coming tonight. I always enjoy hearing what they have to say. And other than that, hope to see everybody at the game Friday.
Yeah, just one more time congratulate the football team there. And just like to say thanks for all the input that I've received over the last couple of months. I think it's been the most amount of feedback that I have heard since I've actually been in office and it is much appreciated and just ask you to keep it coming.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. November, the holidays are on the way. Be ready.
It's the season.
Yes, it is.
A couple of announcements on Veterans Day. On the steps of city hall at 11 a.m., there'll be a small ceremony commemorating the day. So the public is invited. It's being sponsored by the local ministers. So we invite everybody to come to the event. Also, council, at the next meeting, December 1st, you'll be getting a presentation from the Department of Metropolitan Development on, they are changing all of the zoning rules. And it's called Indy Rezone. So they are going to come before you and make a small presentation. They, I met with them this morning. It was really, really interesting. But now probably by January, there'll be some new rules for zoning and they want to make a presentation to you folks. So that will be on the agenda for the next meeting. So a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Meeting's adjourned at 8:10 p.m. We will convene again on Monday, December the 1st.